Good evening. I want to welcome everybody to the City of Everett Planning Commission Meeting, this special meeting for September 8th of 2020. We'll call the meeting to order now, and we will conduct a roll call. Kathy, could you please call through commission members?
Arianna Sack.
Present.
Mr. Labra.
Present.
Mr. Holland. Mr. Tisdale.
Tisdale.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Ms. McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Thank you.
And Kathy, I just got a message from Commissioner Holland saying he's, the team's meeting is not launching. I just sent him a link, so hopefully he'll be joining us shortly.
Okay, thanks. David. Thank you, David. That'll give me time to go through some instructions for call participants today. The situation we're currently dealing with is constantly changing. As part of the Governor's Safe Start Proclamation, the Planning Commission is conducting our meeting remotely. Unfortunately, we are not able to allow members of the community to gather in person or attend. We want to protect you and your family and recognize the need for social distancing. We encourage you to provide comments or concerns on any matter via email at planning@everettwa.gov. You may also watch the meetings on Comcast Channel 21, or Frontier Channel 29, or online at www.everettwa.gov/everettchannel3. You may also listen in telephonically if you do not have digital access. Please call 1-425-616-3920. The conference ID is 720-666-788. If you're accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware that there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast and stream. This is a special meeting of the Planning Commission in order to deliberate on the plan and code amendments for rethink zoning. No additional public testimony will be taken tonight by the Planning Commission. Any action of the Planning Commission is a recommendation to the City Council, who would hold their own deliberations and public hearings on these matters. Thank you for your patience and understanding. We know these are challenging times and appreciate your willingness to be transparent, to continue to reach out to our community, and keep everyone informed as we navigate through this time. With that, let's move to an approval of minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity, commission members had an opportunity to review minutes? And are there any requests for changes or additions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Kathy, go ahead and conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Abstain.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Mr. Holland, is he here yet?
I don't see him in here yet.
Okay. Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Arianna Sack.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This will be an opportunity now for any report from commission members. Is there any commissioners who have anything to share with the group? Okay, hearing none. They've got no report, no member reports today. Let's move to David for staff comments.
All right. Thank you, Arianna Sack. And hopefully Chris Holland is getting into the meeting now, trying to hook him in here. So it's like maybe he just got in. So welcome, Commissioner Holland, if you're on. Did you get on? Hopefully he's on. All right. So for some updates from, from planning staff. So first off, that next week, on the 15th, we are going to have a public hearing on a quasi-judicial land use matter for Housing Hope in the Norton Grand area, Norton Playfield. Just a reminder that that is a quasi-judicial application and not to have any ex parte communications with the applicants, or any proponents or opponents to the project, except in the hearing. We should have gotten the packet out to you. If you have not yet received it, it should be there at any time now. So you will see the application and overview staff report for the Planning Commission's consideration at the public hearing next week. The only other announcement I'd like to have is that they are, the city is recruiting for a planning director position, and so that position is now open, and it closes on September 21st. So anyone out there that is interested in the very rewarding position of planning director for the City of Everett, now is your time to hone your resume and get your application in, because it really is a great community to work for, and look forward to hopefully getting some good applicants in as part of that process. So, and with that, that's all I have.
Okay. I think Commissioner Holland is still maybe working through some technical issues. Commissioner Holland, are you on the line yet?
Can you hear me, Arianna Sack?
I can hear you. Okay, you made it. Thank you.
I'm in.
All right, just in time. Because I think with that, unless Commissioner Holland, did we go back, did you have anything to report?
No, not today. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Okay, with that, then let's move to our only agenda item on the rethink zoning. David, would you like to begin with, go back to you for some overview and additional information?
Yeah, thank you, Arianna Sack, and commission members and members of the public. Just wanted to provide a little bit of a backdrop to this effort, and then some of the information that has been sent out to you from after the public hearing on the 18th for some of the adjustments. But first off, the rethink zoning effort really has been a project that has been going on for a long time. For those of you that have been on the Planning Commission more than five years, which is how long I've been with the City of Everett. You know that our former planning director, Alan Giffen, had reported for quite some time the need to update and revise the city's development codes that were last overhauled in 1989. So now 31 years ago since the code was overhauled. And so when I was hired five years ago, that was one of the main tasks that was at hand, was to create a unified development code for the city and work on that. And we've been working for that whole time, the five years, working with our land use staff, our public works staff, working on what are the issues that are concerning in terms of interpretations and challenges and implementation, and the confusions that the public has in the existing codes that date back to 1989 and have been amended numerous times since then as a result. And so we've been working on that for quite a while, and we've, for the last two years, we've had a lot of touchpoints with the Planning Commission, and very much appreciate the Planning Commissioners' willingness to take on some very tough, tough projects. But all along, we've had you as our citizen advisory body in both this effort and the Metro Everett effort, where we've touched base with you on several different occasions, where we looked at the existing zoning structure, the similarities and uses, and the challenges that we have, and kind of got some feedback and some marching directions from you. And based on those discussions, we went about starting to draft the Unified Development Code as you see in front of you. When COVID hit, we did take a kind of a pause there to think about some things that we may not be able to do at this time, which was then added to the challenges was the early retirement of the planning director, Alan Giffen, and our senior planner, Mr. Tyler, David Tyler, both retired early, right in the middle of the process. And so it made us take out a lot of the changes of the consolidation of the single-family zones and try to keep the single-family zones intact as much as we could through this process, and really focusing on the rest of the structure of the code for multifamily, commercial, industrial zones as part of that. So thank you to the Planning Commission members and the members of the public that have been with us all along. So since the public hearing on the 18th, what I've sent to you is a couple of different things. One, we have a memo that was dated on the 28th of August that talks about the process, the response to the issues of public notice, decision-making, and CIPA exemptions. In short, we feel that where we had discussed all these issues, both internally and with other folks as part of this process, that we felt that our recommendations, in large measure, we want to stay with those recommendations. We think that things like land divisions, where state law allows for the administrative approval of land divisions, that these are really administrative decisions that are based on adopted code and standards. So we turn to our city engineers for information about traffic and access requirements. We turn to our public works, stormwater folks, for issues of drainage control and what's required in those areas. We turn to environmental folks for issues of protection of wetlands and critical habitat areas, things like that as part of it. And so we really believe that the land divisions is administrative process and can stand by the standards that are adopted by the city and decisions being made. Similarity for shoreline permits. Shoreline Management Act has a very specific process for notice to adjacent property owners. And so none of that changes whatsoever. Those are prescribed by state law. But the Shoreline Management Act does not change who, it does not dictate who the decision-maker is. And so in our perspective is that it shouldn't matter who the decision-maker is, as long as they're following the same set of standards and criteria. And there's quite a few projects that have to wait upwards of five months for a public hearing and have to pay another, perhaps $1,000 of additional application fees to be in front of a hearing examiner for those decisions. So we feel that kind of streamlined some of those decisions, making them happen based on adopted code and standards, but still giving notice to adjacent property owners is the right thing to do. For historic overlay projects, again, we're not changing any of the standards. We're not changing what projects go to the historic commission. What we are saying is that the whole neighborhood within 500 feet does not have to be notified when you are doing minor projects, like an addition of accessory dwelling unit. Again, those standards are based on adopted codes and guidelines, and those are best reviewed by professional staff and the historic commission, who is trained in these things. And notifying adjacent property owners is not necessary to affect the outcome of projects at all. Finally, the legislature gave the city some additional tools for infill development, so that we didn't have to go through the process of evaluating State Environmental Policy Act projects when we have infill. So things like multifamily projects within the areas where we want them, and the high-density UR4 zones within downtown, all those types of projects, all the standards, environmental review have already been done on those things. We know where stormwater is going. We have protection of critical areas. We have traffic requirements. All the things that the State Environmental Policy Act set forth in the review process in 1971 was nearly 20 years before the passage of Growth Management Act that started to require these things to be in ordinance. So back in 1971, these things were very timely, and they're very necessary for the state of Washington to protect our environments. But they have grown increasingly obsolete in the process for review of projects, for infill projects in urban areas, because now communities in the City of Everett have the standards for that. So more details are in the memo that we sent to you. We also sent to you a response to all the public comments that we got through August 24th. Since that time, we've received a few other comments. Sent to you a link to the Citizen Common Tracker today. Towards the end of the day, we got letters, I think, from both the Everett School District and Mukatillo School District, just concerned about schools and building heights and standards, and asking for staff to kind of review those issues, but not any recommendations for any changes in the standards as part of that. And finally, based on public comments and also some additional staff review, we have sent you amendments that we'd like the Planning Commission to consider. We sent out a revised one today that was really based on two comments from Mr. Wolken and Ms. Cunningham, that really focused in on some of the Chapter 5 issues, and particularly around industrial zones quite a bit in the areas, and some issues in there that, after a little bit more review of those things, that, in fact, some of the standards are out of the existing code. And so the commenter in one situation wasn't aware that those are existing standards that we had moved over. But things like the restriction on how much retail sales you can have off of, in an industrial location is right out of existing code, and we just copied that across. And so someone thinking that that was a new provision commented on it. But it was a good comment, and you know, now that we think about it, we think that there should be some changes. So anyhow, we got upwards of 23 amendments to quite a few different chapters. Different chapters include, well, first off, the comprehensive plan. In Chapter 2, we have a few amendments in Chapter 2, the land use elements, some changes in Chapter 2.96 regarding historical commission, demolition of properties. Actually, in 2.96, it's authority to adopt rules, very simple procedural change there to make sure that they, it's clear that they have it. In Chapter 13.68, street construction and private construction, some additional clarifications that our public works department had asked for about street improvements and interim street improvements. We have some changes in Chapter 15.02, the land use and project review procedures, some changes in Chapter 19.03, zoning districts and maps, a few changes in definitions, some changes in Chapter 19.05 for uses, few changes in 19.06 regarding lots setbacks and residential densities, few changes in Chapter 19.08 regarding residential uses and development standards, one minor amendment in Chapter 19.27 regarding unit lot subdivision, a change in 19.28, historic resources, to have demolition of Everett-registered properties go to the city council as it does currently, and not just to the planning director. Some, a few minor changes in Chapter 19.34 regarding parking, some changes in 19.38 regarding non-conformities, changes in Chapter 19.41, general authority and requirements. And then what we sent to you today was a revised Chapter 19.05 regarding uses, and a revised Chapter 15.03 regarding land use decisions, criteria, and authority. And that change has to do with adding criteria out of the current code regarding unlisted uses there. So I just kind of gave you an outline of everything. The Planning Commission should have had this for over a week now, at least electronically in front of you, and be glad at this time to answer any questions that commission members have.
Thank you, David. And we did close the public meeting, the public hearing last week. This is for all commissioners now. So please, any commissioners with questions, comments, this is the time. So please.
David, this is Michael Finch. I had a couple of questions. So the first is on draft amendment zoning district map, property 11. This is the Hope Covenant Church. And I don't, I don't have a problem with what's being proposed, but I do recall this matter being in front of us before. I'm just curious as to how what is proposed here is different than what was previously proposed?
It isn't different than previously proposed. This is one of these unique timing issues in that, well, it is different in what was proposed in one respect. It has to do with the zoning, because what they requested for zoning is zoning that would no longer exist. And because we have to amend the comprehensive plan, or we can only amend it once a year, it has to be done concurrent with rethink zoning. And so if we amend the comprehensive plan, and we amend the zoning code, then it just can't happen at the same time. So the difference for what they have is simply that we're applying one of the new zones to them, and we're applied the UR3 zone for their request, I believe.
It's UR4.
UR4? Yeah, along the corridor. And we had approved an UR4 zoning designation on that property.
Yeah, okay, all right. And I guess the other question I had, just on a less specific basis, was I appreciated Dan Ernesti's memo that was included in the packet. While simplistic, I think it's good for folks to understand kind of how this market equation works. I guess what I was left with was wondering, and it's presupposed in the memo, is that I assume that the city is saying, adopt rethink zoning, and permitting cost will go down, timing for permitting will go down, and predictability will go up. Is that, am I reading this correctly? Because that's how I read Dan's memo, is support rethink zoning, because you're going to make Everett a more attractive environment for development.
Yeah, that's part of the, kind of the underlying thing that we've been trying to do, is to make our decision-making more predictable from a development code standpoint, so that things can get through the planning side of the equation. And as we have heard a lot from the development community over, actually, my whole career, is that time is money. And so the more delays, the more, you know, impacts to risk for the developer as a result of that. I will say that, you know, it's been interesting since Alan left, and I've started to see a little bit of the permitting side of things. And I know that Steve Inglesby is on the, on the call tonight, too, our land use manager. But some of the timing of things is also not just a factor of our zoning and development codes, but it has to do with other review processes, whether it's review of traffic impacts, to stormwater, to, you know, other things at times that are kind of out of our control. Even, there's been a lot of loss of staff in some of our permit center functions, and so they're operating at about 60% capacity right now. And so getting things through right now has been challenging from a staffing perspective. And so we're working to try to get that up, so that the timely review can happen. And then lastly, part of this, and I had a conversation with Commissioner Tisdale earlier today, too, is that for the last eight weeks or so, I've been doing trainings with all the land use staff on this package of code amendments every Monday morning. We start out for about an hour each Monday, reviewing the code and walking through this, so that if it gets adopted, that they'll be in a position to, to be able to run with it right away and not have delays with trying to figure out where things are. And so getting them familiar with it, kind of working through some existing development projects, so that they're familiar with what the existing development requirements are, and what the new standards are. And there's several projects that I know that are waiting in the wings, because some, some parts of this are advantageous to them to move forward with.
Great. So it sounds like, I guess one of my concerns was that adopting, you know, a new approach to permitting in this COVID environment would actually slow things down. But it sounds like you're feeling confident that a unified development code for the planning staff will maybe speed things up.
Yeah, I don't think it would go any direction other than that. And I don't know, Steve, or if you're still on, Steve, if you want to chime in at all, Steve's our land use manager.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Steve Inglesby of the planning staff. And yeah, I concur with David on this, that overall, I think the code will be simplified. Design standards may be broadened the city entirely, but overall, with the complexity being reduced, I think that'll improve our timeline.
Great. And I guess one final comment for me is, David, in the past, you've been clear that this is not going to be perfect, that there will be the need for some amendments to be made as folks start to work within the revised code. I just want, I guess, my fellow commissioners to hear it again, that there is a path to making changes in the near future when, say, the new development director comes on board, as new projects work through this new zoning and find issues that weren't contemplated. I just, I know it's, I know it's going to be 90% or better, but I also want to feel confident that there's a path to refining this in the near term, as changes need to be made to bring economic development into Everett.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, even when we did the Metro Everett package, we got an infill project in a downtown location. And as we started to look at that, I believe it was something about side setbacks, as you, you know, we're trying to actually get people to build, you know, building to building and not have any side setbacks. And we, we saw that when we started reviewing the project, and we took care of that amendment in no time as part of that. And there certainly are going to be those situations. We just, another one for Metro Everett, we just discovered in our review of our project. And, and so that was one of the last amendments that I just sent out to you, was to make sure that where we took off, took off the clinic office overlay in some areas where there's well-established clinics already there, that we didn't allow those, under the code, those clinics to get reestablished. And that was a factor of a last-minute addition from city council that put some restrictions. And it was one of those things where we didn't get to kind of think through the whole thing at the time to make sure that we, we got, we thought through those issues. But, but to get to your question is that when we find those things, we can take care of them, we can amend them. The flexibility is now there, where the changes in the comprehensive plan are not needed. And so these are code amendments, and the code amendment would just go back through the Planning Commission, and, you know, little fixes can go real quick. And to city council, we can get through those, and certainly would be able to do that and accommodate that.
Thanks, David.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioner questions or comments?
I've got a couple. This is Tisdale.
Go ahead, Commissioner Tisdale.
David, I shouldn't have talked to you today, because now I've got to re-talk it out. But I'm really uncomfortable with this process for a couple of reasons. It has nothing to do with staff or my fellow commissioners. It's about actually going out, you know, everything sounds good to your training sessions and all of that stuff. But what industries have we reached out and actually touched? You know, you've got You know, you've got some things even in what I followed through Wilkins' deal where, you know, you did, we we, this plan, I shouldn't say you, but this plan takes all property types and lump sum into one one zone. And those different piece of properties spread different places in the city. I I don't understand how how that's going to work. I think that's one. And the, again, it's about, it might sound simpler to staff, but staff isn't our customer. Staff isn't the fella that I got a call from two weeks ago that's trying to move his business from Monroe to Everett and create B and O tax and sales tax and over a hundred jobs. And is, and and and, you know, the process isn't easy. The process, and it's the process that we have now, and it isn't even so much. So I I I just, I I hear you. I understand you. I hope you're right and I'm wrong. But for that reason, I I really think that it begs me the question, why is this so important to do right now? Because in this time of uncertainty, you're seeing things that five months ago, who would ever think we would see the rental rate in San Francisco go backwards or in Seattle go backwards? You know, we know that a lot of the office buildings might not ever be office buildings again because of the work at home situation. There's just so much uncertainty. And then you put on top of that, we're hiring a new planning director. And, you know, again, it sounds like it doesn't cost anything to do a simple code amendment. But you talk about time, you got to have a planning commission meeting, you know, you got to book that. You got to book it into city council. That, I mean, that's 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 time as as well. And so I I'm, I'm really, I I'm really struggling. I I guess. Let's take a, let's take the project at Thirty Second and Broadway, the Connect project, and let's, that's just got completed. Let's put it through this zoning and what will it do to the live work units and or what, you know, what streamlining would this do for that project? Or the the other one that I don't really see that we have addressed, maybe I missed it, but is the automobiles, you know, is what 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 zoning has been put on the automobile industry and the sales side of things? And the other thing that I have heard out talking and trying to get information is some people, you know, have just been notified in the last two or three weeks. And I, you know, does that give enough time? Are we really being fair? Did those people get selected because of their piece of property? You know, why did they get notified three weeks ago or two weeks ago or a week ago? That, hey, this is something you should be paying attention to. And so for those reasons, I I just really struggle with, again, not the quality of the product as much as the timing of the product and is it really necessary to do at this particular time? And I would bet, because it's the only thing I could do, that this, there are different places in commercial and residential institutional, like the schools and churches, that I I don't think it's going to be simpler for them. It's going to sound simpler. It's going to be a thinner brochure. But, you know, we we need to make sure that we are competitive with Marysville and Montlake Terrace as an example. And if somebody's out talking to a site locator, we want to make sure that they they know that Everett is the place to go. They don't have to be told that it's a place to go. So that that's why I'm struggling.
All right. Well, attempt to try to cover some of those those points. So first off, kind of the, take the last one that you had there about the competitiveness. And, you know, we always, as as part of the the mission for rethink zoning and the the code update was to do two things, you know, first off is to have still the high community standards and quality development standards for for the community to make it livable and a good place to to work and to live and to visit within the community. And so that was, that was important. But also is to make the the projects be able to come in and that we would be competitive with with other areas. I know when we adopted the Metro Everett standards, you know, I had some conversations with architects who were contemplating projects. And they were asking about some standards, things like floor area ratio. And, you know, we've, we've taken floor area ratio out of the code entirely now. And so no longer do you have those types of things that really were quite a challenge for people as they develop the property. There's, there's one positive side of things that I know I've heard from Commissioner Finch is that there's a good way of kind of figuring out some cost benefit of a piece of property. But but then when you actually get to putting a pencil to paper and and working through things, it's it's quite a different calculation to have to go through, do things like that and the density. So instead, we have some very simple performance standards. We have lock coverage requirements. We have building height requirements. We have setbacks, open space requirements. And those are things that people can go and and get those those answers in a way to find that. So most people find that as a very good advantage to to come into things. I think the other thing is for a long time, Everett's always been in a pretty good position, or not always, but everything I've seen in terms of some flexibility to meet the changing market. It was very popular many years ago to try to get more of a retail atmosphere on downtown streets, for example, to always require retail at the ground floor. And while retail at the ground floor is great, it creates activity, it also created a lot of empty spaces in places. And I think that you will continue to, that would be one of the challenges going forward with the changes in our economy in the retail sector and office sector is what we do need to be flexible. We need to be able to allow housing and other things in those those areas. And so our existing code structure allows that. And this still allows all that to to allow ground floor residential and no changes are being dictated to otherwise. I think the only zones were, the industrial zones were residential is is limited and the industrial zones to, in order to maintain the industrial land base, but also to avoid the conflicts with that. The Connect at Broadway, if you recall, we actually used that project as an example in our discussions when Dave Tyler came to the planning commission about building design and standards. And we looked at the modulation of that building. At the time, it was not, the final siding was on. It was sheathed in yellow or something like that at the time. But we talked about the modulation and the articulation of that that building and touched base with the planning commission as to whether or not that project met what our expectations were under the Metro Everett plan. And and whether any adjustments were necessary. And the planning commission indicated that they they liked the the building and and how it was designed and how it fit into the landscape. And so there are no changes in the standard. So everything that that project is going through, the same standards are going through now. Vehicle sales is an issue that basically we have the same standards in the code that that are in the existing code. And I can tell you that vehicle sales in general are are quite restrictive in the city of Everett. They're restricted to certain areas along Evergreen and Everett Mall area. And we've just transferred those existing standards over. And I know that was a comment that came up in Mr. Wilkins' letter that he sent about those restrictions. And those are existing standards. And so we weren't trying to change anything unless we had heard otherwise from planning commission members or city council that you wanted us to look at those standards. And we had not heard anything about that previously. And so didn't take that on as part of that. And so those things are still there. Kind of lastly, kind of talk about notice and timing issues. So the notice that has been sent out, so this is a citywide legislative process. And so what we've done is we, you know, we did a public participation plan. We provided that update to the planning commission. We have reached out through different avenues, particularly during this COVID nineteen stretch. You know, we use a listserv that people subscribe to. We have sent that out to many people. I'm not sure who all is on that list. They have to subscribe themselves to it. We had well over three hundred people on that list. And so maybe pushing four hundred people on that list right now. And so that's how we've been primarily distributing to and trying to get the information now in other avenues, including any kind of social media pushes that we've done. We did send direct notice out to people that had land use changes and changes to the contract rezones. And so those people that owned property that was changing from residential to commercial, for example, there are some of the clinic office overlays that got transferred into a different land use designation. And, you know, the twenty seven or twenty eight different ones, we did send notice to all those property owners that of that change. And so we've gotten feedback on on one of them. And that's one of our amendments that we have and got a feedback from another person that wasn't their property. We did an amendment and the property owner was notified regarding that change. And so they they actually, and that's the Benson property, they they have some comments in the record with respect to that. And then we sent notice to the sixty some areas of contract rezon, all the property owners in there that 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 contract rezon was proposed to be repealed. And definitely I had a few phone calls and inquiries from it, those those notices, but not very much at all. And the the ones that made it to really public comment are are just a couple in that whole list. So hopefully I I got to most of your questions.
Yes. Doesn't. I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tisdale. Any other commissioner comments or questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Zalinski, and I would just like to say that many years ago, Snoomish County went through a very similar process of creating a unified development code. It was probably fifteen years ago now or more. And that process took a long time. It took, I don't know, four or five years to complete. There were numerous people going through all of the code provisions of the county at that time, numerous times. And yet, at the end of it, there were still some issues, some problems. So I don't think we can let the fact that there are liable to be amendments that deter us from moving ahead with something that overall I believe is a good thing for the city to simplify and streamline its code, get rid of inconsistencies and redundancies, and in general, make it easier to use and to understand.
Thank you, Commissioner Zalinski. Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Holland. I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to thank staff on all their hard work and effort on this. This is not an easy project. And I I agree and I I appreciate Commissioner Finch's original statements related to, you know, just bringing the 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 concerns that the commission had up to the forefront and and then Commissioner Zalinski. Yeah, it's it's not going to be perfect. There's no way you can cover every situation. But overall, I I think staff did an excellent job of refining the the development code and getting to a point where it's it's more predictable and easier to navigate. I I like a lot of the aspects that were incorporated into it. Not everybody's going to be happy. I I also think that staff did an excellent job in the public outreach, especially during these difficult times. I think that the rethink zoning page was very easy to navigate through, inform yourself and get to, you know, questions, your questions answered. And it was, it was updated frequently. And, you know, you don't, you don't see that a lot in the public process. So I I believe there is an opportunity for everybody to get engaged if they so choose to. And again, you can't please everybody and you're not going to get everything perfect. But then again, you still need to, you you need to move something forward and then figure out what those items might be that need a little bit more attention. And you only, you're only going to discover them once they're implemented and projects are advanced. So again, I I I support a hundred percent the proposal today. And I just want to thank staff for all their hard effort and also the planning commission because we've had lots of discussions and a lot of public input to go through. And I think all the commissioners have done a great job of digesting those and asking the right questions. So those are my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holland. Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Yes, this is Commissioner Lawbera. I just kind of struggled with the definitions between government and government administrative. And referencing some of the public comments, some functions that are government but do tend to be more like heavy industrial or or heavy utility. And I I feel, I sort of felt like some of those are kind of falling between the categories. And I think that might be one area that could be marked clarification.
Are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I think someone was, uh, was, uh, talking.
Yeah, I just, I, it's, it's just a little bit, because there, you are simplifying, it's it's just a little bit difficult to see what category some of those fall into. And so anyway, I just wanted to know if you you felt like you had addressed those comments.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I I think that time definitely will will tell on a few things. And I know you mentioned the thing about government and I I did look that up. Forgot to respond to you about that. But it had to do with, there's in the use table, there's kind of two different types of government building. One is kind of a public works yard and one is a office building. And so the, the two are kind of distinct in there and the the definitions are just slightly different as a result of that. They they really are kind of the same, but they are slightly different. But I felt that the separation of those uses, because we didn't want to have a public works yard in a residential area. But a conservation district office in a mixed use corridor at the edge of a residential area might work, for example. Kind of thing, so.
Well, I did look at that, David, and I thought that, I think your definition between those two were cleaned up a little because I think before they were exactly alike. But then you get to the definition of utility versus industrial. Some of the things that are government functions seem like they'd be better described as utility. I'll just give it a bet. Like transfer stations, things like that. But anyway, other than that, there is no plan to change that the clinic overlay being eliminated and clinics being nonconforming, that that comment was just kind of, we changed that at the last minute without, you know, planning commission discussing it in great length, and that's that.
Okay, you're you're cutting in a little, cutting in and out a little bit. But for the clinics, we have, what I sent out today is an amendment to add to the use table where they would be allowed where they would be allowed in those areas where it's a UR4 high-density zone, and the street is designated as a residential mixed-use zone and, or a street. Those are areas where the clinic office overlay used to be. And so it would not make the, the clinics nonconforming. But a new clinic, however, would have to comply with the new rules for residential mixed use. So they could do a clinic on the ground floor, but they would have to have residential on the upper floors as a result of, of that project.
Okay, I guess I missed that change.
Yeah, that's at the very end of the matrix I sent out today, item number, change number 22, and then sub 14 out of that. I put that in there. So your new-
What I was referencing, but I didn't see, I, I didn't see that detail in there.
If you look at the new chapter five, you'll see that I, I put in UR4 in a, in an administrative use. And so there'd be notice to adjacent property owners as, as a result of that.
Okay, great, thank you. I missed that.
Commissioner Laubra, any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioner question or comment?
Maybe I'll use this as an opportunity, Commissioner Yanisak. David, I get the question. First of all, I guess I'll say I do really appreciate, from my perspective, how responsive staff has been to public comments and, and the responses provided, even if it was just, you know, noting those, you know, those comments. I, I, I do feel like there's been great opportunity for people to be heard and for people's varying perspectives to be considered. So I, I've been very impressed by that throughout this process. I, I am looking at the letter from the, on behalf of the school district that were provided, and I don't think that, I hadn't seen any response to those. Particularly, I'm looking at the part of the letter that indicates that the school districts were concerned that it appears the traditional method to address height issues of variance would not be permitted in residential zones for such a school need under the proposed rethink zoning. David, do you have any response to that? Is that, you think, an accurate interpretation on the school district part?
No, any development standard can apply for a variance. So that part's, that's not accurate. So if people think they have a unique hardship, they could apply for a variance for the height standards. I think their concern is schools and the residential neighborhoods at a 28-foot height limit for that. And so that applies to the residential buildings as well as school buildings. And Steve, if, if I could call on you again, there's no special height adjustments for schools and single-family zoning districts in the existing zoning code, is there?
No, and actually, I think a few schools have gone through the variance process for like their gymnasium, things of that sort. So there's that process available to gain an extra height.
Okay, so just to be clear, that thing that we're doing in the current rethink zoning, which again mostly applies to outside, non-residential, that the school district here seems to be talking about in residential neighborhoods doing their commercial buildings. So it wouldn't prevent new schools from being built or, or, you know, in that neighborhood that, you know, that they could, they could apply and get the necessary heights that they need for the school project?
Yeah, they would have to apply for a variance if they needed to go taller than, than the 28 feet in a single-family zone, for example. But they could do that. You know, if we had gotten the comments earlier, we would have done a little bit more research and responded to that, make sure that everything, because it made me, when I saw that pause, and it was like, I, you know, don't think we'd change anything, but that's why I got Steve on the call tonight, because he knows the existing code, to make sure that I wasn't in error on that.
Okay, good. I guess the other thing I wanted to say is, I guess I am a little bit concerned that since we closed the public meeting, there has been some really, I think, constructive comments raised just in the last two weeks. And I know that you respond to those and actually made some changes as a result. So again, I know this is never, there's never going to be a, a perfect, you know, first, first effort here. It's impossible to plan for everything. So I guess I would just say, I think some of Commissioner Tinsel's comments and suggestions resonate with me a little bit on that. There's always imperfect issues that are going to raise and, and going to be raised and, you know, other comments that are going to be very, very helpful. But going back to what Commissioner Finch was asking about, I mean, I'm hoping that there is going to be plenty of opportunity to easily correct those, those things that we find didn't get, they got missed throughout this already lengthy process and not let the, let the pressure be the enemy of the very good. So I guess I just want to say that I, I think this is a, a good starting point for moving forward, which is of course the end of a culmination of five years of, of, of effort. So I, I think it's all, all, get us a point. And I'm hoping that simplifying will also mean easier for, for everybody to actually use the code and, and apply it. So those are my comments and questions. Thank you. Any other commissioners with comments or questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Zalinski. Again, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Laubra's question about the clinics. In the, in your most recent mail-out, David, you have a matrix where you list the issues and then the proposed amendments. But on this table, you, you raised the issue, but you don't have a proposed amendment listed on your summary sheet. And I think that may be what the confusion was for Commissioner Laubra.
Oh, okay.
That was it. There was nothing in the last column.
I get it. There's 14, and then the issue column, and only 13 for both amendments.
Yes.
I'm sorry. If you go to chapter 1905, I actually did take a, I did make that amendment. So on the bottom of page 15 of the new chapter, 1905, you'll see offices, and you'll see red ink on the UR4 zone with an A on it with note number one, which I need to transfer across into the far-right column as well. But it says it's permitted only on residential mixed-use corridor or TOD streets, and it must be located on the ground floor in a residential mixed-use development.
Okay.
So.
Great. Thank you.
It was a long weekend.
Lot of detail.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions or comments? I guess David or Steve, would either, any additional staff comments to wrap things up?
No, again, appreciate everyone's time and effort in this. And this is, if this goes on to city council, I imagine that there will be more input and more adjustments as we go through that process as a result. And then, then over the next 30 years, there will be continuous review and amendments of, of this package. And so someone 30 years down the, the line will say it's time to rethink the, the zoning in Everett. So I appreciate it. But if there are any motions, I just want to be clear whether or not it's the original packet and the packet of amendments that we sent to you with the clarification that there should be 14 amendments to the, for that number 22 in your memo today.
Okay, so I believe that before the planning commission today is proposed resolution number 20-03. Hope commissioners have had an opportunity to review that. And I guess now would be an opportunity if there's any motion that the commissioners would, would want to make with regard to that resolution. Hi, Chair Yanisak, Commissioner Holland here. I reviewed the resolution and the amendments that went out earlier. And I'd like to recommend the planning commission approve resolution 20-03 as presented by staff. Maybe I can ask, David, is that clear enough for the staff's perspective? Would, would that be clear enough?
Yeah, I think I just, because I introduced it saying it includes the amendment package that I just sent to you today on 9/8 as well. Is that part of your motion, Commissioner Holland?
Yeah, so I'll restate the motion. So recommend the planning commission approve resolution 20-03 with the amendments submitted by staff and forward it on to city council for consideration. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that with the amendments. This is Commissioner Beck.
Commissioner Beck, thank you. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and have a vote. Kathy, would you like to call through for the roll? Roll call vote.
Commissioner McGinn.
Commissioner McGinn was having some internet problems. I think she may be off now.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Zalinski?
I would like to say I am going to support the resolution, but I am going to be offering a small amendment, assuming that it passes, which I will talk about after the resolution passes, if it does. So yes, I support the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Tinsel?
No.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Laubra?
Yes.
Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
Did we, did we, have Commissioner McGinn here still, or is she back?
I'm sorry. I forgot when. Commissioner Beck?
I'm sorry?
You got back.
Did you vote?
I did. I said yes. I think that the chair was trying to check if Commissioner McGinn has actually joined us.
Okay.
Kathy, in addition, I think Commissioner Finch is, is he not the voting, voting participant tonight? It's Commissioner Holland, sorry.
As long as Commissioner McGinn's not here, Commissioner Finch can vote.
I'm sorry, Kathy. Do you want my vote?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, with Commissioner McGinn's absence right now, yeah, you can vote.
I vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks. That's it.
Hey, David, how does that feel? Is that a year and a half worth of work?
You'll, you'll be gone when all the questions got to get answered. That, that's, that's where you're going to be.
I know, I know you're only halfway there. I know you still have to prepare for council, but that, that is an awful lot of work.
It has been a lot of work, and you guys have been along with, for a lot of it. So I really do appreciate, and as well as the staff of, of our department and, and other departments and the public. So we had some great reviewers out there that have sent in some detailed stuff that has made us go through things too. So it's been appreciated all along.
Commissioner Zalinski, did you want to comment?
Uh, yes, I, I just wanted to offer a small amendment to the resolution. And that has to do with the public notification requirements in the historic districts. I would, because we have an active advocacy group in our neighbors and investors in our historic districts, I would like to encourage them to continue by amending the resolution to retain the existing public notification requirements in the historic districts. Those are a relatively small amount of the city that's covered in these historic districts. And I don't believe that the additional, the public notice requirements would impose a, a difficult burden on staff, given the small number of, the small area that these districts contain. And so therefore, I would move that we amend the resolution by retaining the public notice requirements for projects in the historic districts as they currently exist in existing code.
This is Commissioner Beck. I, I actually would second that. I think that's a good recommendation. I don't know if we can formally add it to this resolution, but I think Commissioner Zalinski actually brings up a very good point. So I, I don't know if we can do anything formally, but if we can, I would definitely second that.
What for staff proceed, maybe question for staff procedurally. Would, would this be something, if you just voted and adopted the resolution, would this be something we could do formally at this point?
Well, I, I think you can, I mean, the, the resolution that you just passed did not have any change. You know, it had the, had the changes that we had where we don't notify people within 500 feet. So this is, as Commissioner Zalinski mentioned, this is an amendment to that. So that, that would in essence change your recommendation that you just, that you just passed.
Hey, David, is it possible, instead of making it a formal recommendation, to add perhaps a memo to city council's packet that there were members of the planning commission that were interested in seeing this perhaps, so that it gives you time to absorb what's being discussed here and maybe just giving council a little bit more information while they're doing their diligence?
Well, it certainly is up to you folks what you want to pass on. We've made our, our position known. You know, it costs an applicant over $800 in additional application fees in order to give that notice. And it could potentially delay a project a month to have that notice, because then it's subject to the 14 days notice period, things like that, before historic commission meeting. And it really doesn't affect the outcome in terms of review against standards. And so that, that's our recommendation. But if planning commission disagrees and wants to forward something else, then, then that's fine.
Well, I guess we did have a motion and a second. Is there any additional comments? I guess we have some discussion? This is Commissioner Holland. We've had these kind of discussions in the past. And as far as the, the original motion, I believe, would have to be rescinded and then reestablished. But I, as Commissioner Beck had stated, there's no reason that, I mean, this is part of the minutes that there are people interested in having public notice within the historical district. So I think that carries weight, but I, I don't know about an official memo or anything else like that. But I think that the original recommendation, in order to get the, the new motion by Commissioner Zalinski, and I think we'd have to amend, rescind and then amend.
Any other discussion?
I guess, this is Commissioner Yanisak. I guess I'll just add my thought would be that, I mean, these, these matters have come up before, and this was a matter of quite, quite a lot of discussion previously. We did just adopt the resolution, and I agree with Commissioner Holland that it is part of the minutes. And certainly, I think it would be brought again before city council, this, this issue, they'd have an opportunity to address it. So I guess my thought would be, I guess, my, my thought would be to just stick with the vote currently. And I guess I wouldn't necessarily be supportive of an additional amendment at this time. Any other discussion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Zalinski. I just have one comment. I may have, I may have erred procedurally in not proposing the amendment ahead of the resolution. So Commissioner Holland may be correct that, that I did it. I, I should have offered the amendment before the resolution was voted on. So that was my error. But I'm hoping that the commission can still approve sending the message to council that the commission is sensitive to the comments that we heard from within our historic districts about the importance of public notice.
So I'm not, not sure procedurally how to handle this, if we would first need to have a vote to rescind our initial votes? Or if we could just amend or vote to, if there wanted to be a vote to amend after the fact? Anyone have any comments or suggestion on that?
This is Commissioner Beck. At this point, I think it's going to be reflected in the memos. And so hopefully, city council members will actually take this under- memos. And so hopefully, City Council members will actually take this under consideration and decide for themselves. I think we've discussed it enough that they will be aware of it and they could make their decision.
Okay. I mean, we did have a motion and a second, so I do want to be responsive to that.
I am willing, this is Commissioner Zalinski, I'm willing to rescind my motion on the amendment so long as I understand that our minutes will reflect this discussion that we had. There's no formal vote from the Commission, but at least there's two Commissioners who express support for the idea. And if that's in the minutes, then I'm content with that.
Well, I certainly think we'll get a chance to review the minutes too at our next meeting to approve those and to make sure any additions. And this discussion certainly did occur. Any other Commissioner comments or questions on that? That matter?
And to just let you know, I'm sure that one of the things that the City Council's going to pay a lot of attention to is the public notice and process. And so the memo that I provided to you will be going to City Council as well. And that covers the historic district thing. So it'll be, it'll definitely be on their radar for discussion purposes. It won't be something that's going to be hidden in the discussion.
So with that, then, I guess I will recognize and accept Commissioner Zalinski's retraction of the motion to amend. And we will let stand our previous vote. So with that, I believe that brings us to the end of our only agenda item today. Was there anything else from Commission members? Anything else from staff?
Nothing else from staff. Thank you again very much and see you about the same time next Tuesday.
Okay, so this will conclude this special meeting and we'll be back next week on our regular schedule. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Great night, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good job, David.
Good job to you. Thank you much.